Mayor by bring the meeting of the Waireka City Council to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated, and if you have your cellphone with you, please turn it off, I'll turn mine off too, or at least turn the volume off. Okay, please, your cellphones. This is the time for public comments, council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time, please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium right over here, state your name and family address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments, or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Does anyone have a public comment that is something not on the agenda? No? One more time, anybody have a public comment? Okay, thank you. We'll go straight into our presentation, Robin Richards is here, and she's going to make a presentation and update on the status of the proposed recreation and parks district development process. Welcome, Robin.
Well, thank you. It's good to be here again, it seems like I've been here several times over the last year. And first off, thank you for having me, I really appreciate the ability to talk about our latest and greatest project that the community is working on. What I'd like to do is give you a quick update of where we are with this pool, parks and rec things, you obviously know a lot of it, some people in the audience might not know as much about it. Then I want to talk about the timeline that we have developed for where we need to be when, and it's pretty darn tight, so that's one reason to come here, and then talk about the resolution that we're requesting, and the contents of that, okay? So, all of you know Waireka had a city pool, well, has a city pool, it's just not functional.
Can you hold on just a second? Somebody in the audience, I think it's Catherine Gilbert, is passing out information that we do not have.
Oh, I don't have it, she's gonna get it right up to the egg.
Usually, yeah, we need to have it in advance so we can read it.
Okay, well, this is the present, this is part of, this is actually my presentation.
You have to have it up front.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I'll be walking in through all of the details. Okay, so back to your ree pool, so it closed in 2017, and we've been working to try to figure out a way to replace the pool, and obviously, you all know because you submitted a grant to the California Parks and Recreation.
And we still haven't heard back.
And we haven't heard back, but we're still keeping our fingers crossed. I did see something on their website that they got $2.3 billion worth of requests for the $245 million that they could get away. So it's about, I think you said 10% or 1 to 10, so it sounds like it's still good. I just think ours is terrific, so.
Of course, it's the best.
Anyway, so, back to when we put this stuff together, we had about 300 or so citizens attend 11 public meetings, like I said, the grant was submitted, it's for a new larger pool, a retractable cover, a splash pad, a new building, a revised entrance from the parking lot, pathways and landscaping, and improved little league field, so it's got a comprehensive activities for ree pool and park. So simultaneously to that effort, when we started it, it was around, actually it was around this time last year, around February, March, somewhere in there, because we had the public meetings in April, we were also looking at one of the key concerns, which was maintenance and operation, and I think I talked to you guys about it, because we put that in thinking, okay, so now how can we maintain and operate it? Well, therein lies what we're talking about tonight, is kind of how we are envisioning we might be able to do that. That group, we had a committee that met a couple of times, and then many of us met, and after the grant was done, we started to meet a couple of times, and I'll go through the timeline in a bit about what we've done. We really looked and we thought that creating a recreation and parks district might be the best option for us, it seemed like not only would it work on the pool, maintenance and operation issue, but it would also be a kind of an exciting thing for Waireka to have, you know, the recreation department, because we haven't had one for a really long time. So, what I'd like to do now, as you all have a hand in them, kind of walk through the timeline of where we are to just sort of let you know where we were. So, if you look at the very first thing, April to September, we've been working on discussing what we would like to do, and we've had several meetings. Specifically, we had a group of people meet on October 29th, kind of the initial group of kind of a citizens committee to form this Waireka Parks and Recreation District, and they decided that we needed more background information and some more stuff, so we did that in November, we had a budget committee meeting, and we looked first at kind of the area to be served, and sort of just talked about it generally. Then we had another meeting December 4th, which the group also made some further recommendations on what we might want to do, and they also suggested that we have some open community meetings, which we conducted January 28th and 29th, and they came up with some more ideas primarily about, they were kind of really excited about the, not just the pool, but the whole idea of recreational programming within Waireka. So that was cool. Then on February 13th, we had another group meeting, oh, that was just last week, huh? It's just 20, okay? Well, we're getting up to where we are now. Okay, and that group just made some recommendations, which I'll go over in just a bit, about the structure of the organization. So here's where we are now, February 20th, yay. Then, this is, this is where it gets tight, okay? So March 5th is what we were proposing, if you all agree to have you take a look at the resolution. I talked to LAFCO, and just so you know, I did talk to the LAFCO consultant as well in putting together that resolution, and he was telling me about some of the contents that should be in there, so. March 12th would be if they want to review it in April, and then April 14th, they have a LAFCO meeting, and then if LAFCO says yes, then we would develop a ballot measure, language and review, it would go sometime around May, I just put a random date, because I don't know if that's actually the date, but in May, to the board of supervisors, so they could put that on the ballot. The key date here is July 13th, that is the deadline for us to have something on the ballot, that's why we're kind of crunched in terms of timing. And the unknowns are obvious, really the big unknown is the LAFCO review, and if they find that it's without problems, then we can go forward with that, but I just don't know that as of yet. Then, if you continue on, let's say everything works, well, we're, it'd be great, then August and September, we would run campaigns in October, the ballots are mailed October 3rd, and November 3rd would be the general election, in which case they act on both the district and a parcel tax, which would support the district. If everything, and we get two thirds of the vote in November, then it would go on the 2021 tax bill, and the items we collect in 2021, so that, actually the district wouldn't even be around until about this time, two years from now, 22. So if you miss this election, it really does put you back even more years, and so that's kind of why we're in a little bit of a, doing it quickly. Okay, so that's kind of the timeline. What goes into the resolution, and I did send a draft to Steve, and I think they're reviewing it, is that sound right, Steve?
Yeah.
Part of it's the boundaries, you have a picture of the boundaries, but I'm, I'll move this one this way. So, what we did, I love these like little digital things, they're fun. Okay, so we looked at the city of Waireka, and that's in the purple right there, and obviously that's I-5 running through it. And what's in the white is kind of a modification of the Waireka Elementary School District. Waireka Elementary School District includes all this, except this is Delphic, so that's not in there, but they also have a big chunk up there. So we kind of looked at that, and we thought if we're just using the elementary school district, this seemed like kind of too far away, and Delphic seemed close, and they always, I mean, they kind of come into Waireka, so the group thought, well, that seems like a good idea. They actually are based on voting precincts, so it's really, the purple are all the Waireka 1 through 6, the voting precincts, and then the outside white ones are the precincts that are just touching Waireka, so we kind of looked at that. We also looked at zip code, and in looking at zip code, look at Holly, it got kind of messy and kind of confusing, because it was very hard, sometimes the zip codes don't really match really well, like there's a zip code for Waireka here and not there, I mean, it just, it was a little odd. This seemed like a really good structural way, plus we already had a way to define it in terms of the boundaries, because they're based on existing precincts, so the voting part of it would be an easier way to look at it. So, sound okay? That's kind of the rationale for doing that. I don't know if there's other comments on the rationale, does that seem right in? Okay, so that's kind of the boundary we have, and you have a copy in your handout, so you can take a look at it. The next thing we needed to do besides figuring out the boundaries, is how are we going to govern this thing, and how are we going to do it? So we looked at Mount Shasta Recreation and Park District, and they have a five-member board that's appointed by the city council and the board of supervisors. You can either do an appointed board, or you can do an eleven board. And one of the rationale for doing an appointed board is, you don't have to pay for elections and go, and it gets pre-spending, and time consuming, and you have them every two years, you don't do special, I mean, it's just, it makes it a little harder. And so we thought it was also in line with what Mount Shasta Recreation District is doing as well, and they do a similar thing, they have their city council appoint some, and I think there's one or so that the board of supervisors. So that was the governance structure that we were recommending for that, so that's included in the resolution. The other pieces are, we needed to determine a description and the level of services, so that is, is part of this, and really, the main services, let me get to that section a little bit, is to really enrich the quality of life, I mean, that's kind of the overarching reason for doing it. Work with the city of Waireka on proactive maintenance and operation for the facilities, but in particular, ree pool and park, certainly that's our focus. To build community awareness and excitement about recreational programming, and then to coordinate with other organizations and agencies. One of the things that in kind of all of our talks from a lot of people is, is we have a lot of nonprofits that are out there, we have soccer, we have little league, we have Babe Ruth, we have the community gardens, we have, I probably forget, well, there's a lot, anyway, there's a lot of like nonprofits that work, and this would be a way to kind of coordinate and help parents, because they'd still be doing what they do, but they're all parent volunteers that are doing this, and so they don't have like a place that specializes in recreation, that they can go to to ask questions, so that's one of the things that we thought as well. In terms of what we would be doing, a focus in terms of the budget is ree pool and park, and we would be maintaining the pool and assuming all the maintenance and operations, and that little hand and have was something that I'll mention in just a bit. We also talked about maybe working with the city on the park scheduling, because if this is a recreational program, and they're working with the soccer and the little league and all the other, they might do the scheduling for the parks, and take that burden off the city staff, because they would be the ones that would be knowing what's going on recreationally. And obviously, we're going to be like this, in terms of working with the city. They would conduct recreational programming, they look for funding opportunities that they might be able, because if they're a district, and again, they can apply for grants just like you all can. And those are kind of the key things that we talked about. There is kind of a phase thing of when things would begin, but nothing can begin until two years from now if we're approved. Okay, so that's kind of the activities that we're taking a look at. Along with that, that we discussed, when I met with a LAFCO guy, and I'll just tell you what he said, he goes, well, here are parks and rec, why don't you just get all the parks and you own them all? And I'm going like, oh my, that's a little bit bigger than I had thought when we were starting to do this, we were really concerned about the pool, the park, and some recreational stuff. So we talked about it, and one of the things that we thought would be good is if the district did have some property. The property that makes the most sense is ree park and pool, because if we're going to be spending money to maintain it, and have the staffing and all that stuff, then that would make sense to have them located at that park, and they are then responsible for it. Not all the other parks, just really that one, it made kind of sense, so that might be something that, that's kind of what we're proposing, to do that for just the one park would be owned by the district. Mount Shasta owns, I think, all the parks except one in Mount Shasta, but they started in 1948, so they've been around forever, and probably purchased them actually as a district, but, so that kind of made sense to do that transfer, but not the others. Instead, just working on the programming at those parks, and maybe scheduling and working with the volunteer groups. So that would be a property exchange that would go in line with that. Then, the next one is the important one, is the funding. So we put together a budget, and we've been kind of got the numbers around, and finally came about, to meet about $500,000 annually, in order to operate it. That would include all of the stuff and running the pool for eight months, instead of the three months which we used to run it as part of that grant, and so you need kind of year round staff, you need year round operations, and they'd be doing a little bit more just than the pool part of it. So, we evaluated kind of funding sources all along the way, I mean, we looked at property, sales tax, we can't do that, we couldn't do this, we couldn't do that, so we landed on parcel tax. And the proposal that we're putting in for would be $96, which is, $8 a month is kind of how we're looking at it, to operate this district. And so that has to obviously go and get a two thirds vote in November, but we are hoping that we're going to be able to give people an idea. When we did go around and knock on doors, just for those public meetings, people were really excited about the pool. Now, I know, they say, well, what if we don't get the grant? If we don't get the grant, we apply again, and we look for other sources of funding, so it's not like, it's not like we're giving up, even if we don't get this one, and as I mentioned before, the grant people said, they'll give us feedback on what we could do better, if we don't get it, to apply next time. So, so that is something that we're planning to do. And we won't be in existence for two years anyway, so that's the other thing. There's a sequel requirement for LAFCO, but I think we can get some exemption or something, I can't remember how the wording is of it, but they didn't give the.
Category exemption?
Probably something like that, I think we wouldn't necessarily need to.
Yeah, so.
I think it'd be a category exemption, I'm positive.
Yeah, I think that's what the guy said to me, too, some kind of categorical exemption. So, okay, so you have this on the handout, I went through the timeline, I went through this, and you have the background, and talked about the process. So, I guess I'm ready to answer questions, we just kind of give you an update, we have been working on it, I tell you, I haven't heard yet, except people go, gosh, how are you going to get the election? Well, we'll plan a campaign, and we'll give it the old college try to get two thirds vote, that's all we can say and all we can do. I'm optimistic, I haven't heard a lot of people say no, they actually are excited about having a recreational district, and we've been working, YMCA people are here, there are key people that are looking at us, particularly because they know how much it costs energy and cost wise to do a pool, and they're very much in favor of having this kind of an organization help us out with that, so.
Do you want to add anything, guys? I think we have one question from the council member.
Yes, the ballot proposition, is it all in one, or is there two parts, two separate parts?
What?
Just for one, okay? And how much do you estimate out of your $500,000 budget is for the pool, approximately half of it or more?
More.
More than half.
So it's over, probably over $300,000, or more.
Closer to four.
Closer to four.
And that's kind of what we heard in estimates, having done this pool stuff, it's 300, 400,000? Isn't that kind of what you guys?
There's the white people going, they've done a lot of work on it, yeah.
Is it 10% approximately, Steve?
There's some rules of thumb that indicate that somewhere around 10% of the cost of the pool, now that's for a full-time, year-round pool. And so, but part of, and some of that includes not just the actual operating expenses that year, but to build in money for doing things that come up every five years or 10 years or, or that sort of thing. It's hard to know until you actually run one, exactly how much it costs, and we want to make sure that there's enough of a budget, so that it continues to operate smoothly.
Also, asked, said, ask the parcel tax, $96 per parcel to fund the district, what is, Mount Shasta's parcel and recreation, what do they, what do they charge?
They actually are under property tax, they were 1948, so they get some share of property tax.
Oh, okay.
So they aren't funded the same way.
They're not funded the same way, okay.
And they're after, were after Prop 13, and they were obviously way before.
Gotcha.
So they have that available.
And that's along the lines of my question too, so the $96 per parcel, approximately, how much revenue will that gain you every year? Do you know?
It's over half a million.
Is it 500,000? Because it depends on the number of households.
Well, I went on the non-exempt, you have 4,884 non-exempt pieces? Was it, would that be correct, Robin?
Right, that's the general estimate on parcels, and how pieces will be addressed aside from, or, yeah. Well, that says non-approved.
Those are non-exempt, some parcels are for service or.
Right, right, so those we wouldn't.
Well, you've got 5,600 total, but 4,800 that are non-exempt, 48, 9, that'd be 468,000, excuse me, 855, wouldn't it?
That's, we, we're, on improved parcels?
Right, and then we were, actually what Mount Shasta had proposed, and I think I have it in this handout, is $96 on improved parcels and $40 on unimproved parcels.
Okay.
So there are going to be some parcels that don't have houses. And it'll be partially funded not only by that, but by swimwassies, people will be able to charge for those who rental. And if, if, this is what LAFCO does for the property exchange, and this is what the consultant said, if the city does give the district ree pool and park, then a bit of the property tax that you have to go, that goes to maintain that park, then goes to the district, it's like 0.0001% or something, whatever it is, we have to figure that out still, but, it's called a property tax exchange agreement, so when, when property goes to another district, part of the property tax goes with that. And we talked a little bit about that in our meeting the other day. That's a common thing, LAFCO determines it, but I'm thinking that we could give them ideas about what that might be.
Yeah, I noticed that that wasn't in here, and we did talk about it at the last meeting that we had here.
Right, yeah. It's included in, I think, the draft resolution that I sent to Steve.
Do we have a copy of it?
I just sent it to Steve kind of for review, the lawyer and stuff, that I.
I don't see it.
That, that's not part of your current packet, that was some information that you may have gotten by you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll need to know that before the next meeting.
That estimate is about 75 grand.
75.
But as Robin was pointing out, that is determined by LAFCO, and I have no idea what they use to look at.
So it's determined by LAFCO, and we just happen to have the chairman of the board of LAFCO sitting right here.
No, I know.
So did he have LAFCO?
She's trying to be very quiet because of that.
Exactly.
I love that, that's the word there. Okay.
She can't say.
She's got a vote on it, not with us.
Madam.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did.
For those improved lots, Robin, where, and it's not uncommon in Waireka, to have a house on, on two lots or even three lots, does that mean that that lot owner, if it's an improved lot, so there's a house on, on two lots, does that mean they pay $96 times two?
If it's two lots.
The way we calculated this was, a parcel has a site address assigned to it, and so if there's multiple addresses, the addresses are spanned, I don't believe, so it should be a one-to-one relationship, I believe, we can look into that situation. I mean, again, we're just doing rough, rough numbers, we can get more specific numbers by talking to the actual assess, I mean, the auditor, tax people, we're just doing general.
So, the question that you have, it hasn't got an exact answer yet, but we do need to have an exact answer, and I agree with you, this is moving kind of quickly, so we're just putting this stuff together. I will talk to the county.
Okay, because I'm wondering, so if there are three addresses on there, they might pay 96 times three?
No, there's, usually it's only a one-to-one relationship, like, I can't think of situations where that's, like, for example.
Excuse me, could you please come down to the microphone? Because we're being recorded, and they won't be able to hear you. Thank you.
So in the analysis of improved parcels, we use parcels that have a site address assigned to them, and that's done through the planning department, and so, the example of, there's multiple addresses on an apartment complex, but there's one address, I mean, there's multiple residents on that, but it's still one property that's assessed parcel, improved parcel. So, it's improved parcel values, not necessarily an address one-to-one relationship, so.
But it's a different formula for an apartment building, right?
Yeah, exactly, it's just, it's just a, the tack, it's an improved parcel, so is there a structure on it, is there a wrong structure, so that determination of, is it a parcel that's over 5,000?
So, so let's, let's just take, I think it used to be called Pine Guards, what's it called now?
Shasta View.
Shasta View, they have multiple addresses, I think they have three or four, would that be, and it's probably, how many units is it, 70, 80?
Something like that.
Would they, would that, do we know? You may not, I think that's what you're telling me, you're not sure. What I'm curious about to find out is, is that going to be for, they have four addresses, is that going to be four parcel taxes?
So the, if the property owner, each parcel has a property owner, and again, I'm going to embarrass myself here probably, but, so the parcel that that owner might have, each parcel has a value on it, and I pay taxes on each parcel. So there, there's, improved parcels doesn't relate to the address necessarily, usually there's an address assigned to it, so we kind of had both numbers here as an estimate, and again, this is just proposals, but the actual analysis would be done by the experts, but essentially, if the parcel is improved by the assessor, the tax assessor determines this is an improved parcel with over 5,000, whatever value is determined as improved or not improved, then it doesn't matter if they own four parcels or however many pieces of property, like I have, my property has a tiny little parcel and a really thick, really big parcel, I pay taxes on both, but the big one's improved, so I pay more on the improved parcel, I don't know, that kind of example, you know?
And, and those are good questions, that's my next thing to do.
Okay.
Go and talk to the county, and what we have to do for the board resolution is actually clearly define all that, you can't just randomly say this, we have to say, this, these are the rules that we're going to use, because the assessor can't do it unless we set the rules, so I will get that.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, because there was a question that, that the apartment complex might pay more, it would be, if there's an apartment complex on one parcel, my understanding is that the proposal is that they would pay $96.
Wow.
Our, our measure H, the fire tax, was handled a different way, where as you increase the number of units on a parcel, then there's an increased fee, it's not one-to-one ratio, but it, there is.
Well, and, and so we're not there, we might, we might make that change, I still have to talk to the assessor, we're sort of in a general state right now, but I'm seeing that we need to be very specific, and so we'll get that probably early next.
Well, I like that idea, where it's, you know, pays a little bit more on something that's multi.
And do it kind of based on, on what other people are doing.
Well, and that, that measure H is based on a presumptive, that, that you're going to, that you have, if you have 30 units, you're going to have 30, at least 30 people that you're going to respond to, and the same thing with what Robin's talking about, if you have 30 units, you're going to have some kid, more than just two or three kids.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, the impact, the impact would be greater if you have, you know, 80 apartments and you have 40 kids.
That's what she's acknowledging.
Right, and so that's the part I haven't worked on yet, and so I will.
Yeah, you acknowledge, I appreciate that.
There's a question in the back, and she's had it, come down, come on down.
You've got to wait for me to walk down.
Okay, we can, come on down, Ann.
And now I'm officially old, I'm going to speak for old people.
Ann's got a new hip, all right.
So, my concern is with people that are on fixed incomes, and I talked to my friend who's on that park and rec district in Mount Shasta, and she said they did come up with a solution, which was if you applied in person, you could get your rate reduced to the non-residential rate, or whatever that's called, so it would go from 96 to 40, or whatever the other rate was, you have to show up and you have to ask for it in person, but you could use the, I think that's a good standpoint for somebody that's on a fixed income, that they actually could get a reduced rate, so.
Okay, thank you. Good job. She's doing good with her new hips.
Ann's got a new hip.
So, so there's just that one hanging thing out there that's hanging, and I will make sure it's not, yeah, it's not a hanging. So, so there's just that one hanging thing out there that's hanging and I will make sure it's not, yeah, it's not hanging.
Thank you, Robin.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll get it clarified. Because actually, the board resolution, I've looked at some from other places, is pretty darn detailed. I mean, it's pages long of what they sent to the county clerk for, uh, for the ballot measure. So it has to, we have to clearly define all that stuff. But I'll take in about multiple units, um, seniors and, um, and then the.
Multiple properties with one address.
Right.
Right.
And on measure H, the, although parks districts really are residential, is where the demands are.
Oh, okay.
Not really from, so it's, it would be hard to argue that, say, McDonald's.
Right, right.
Or Burger King or Taco Bell causes park usage, although they, so.
Sure they do, they cycle kids through.
Well, before the kids come to the park.
Hungry kids.
Yeah.
You could argue that they, they eat in the park.
That's true.
Litter maybe, I don't.
You know, looking at, at this, um, uh, at this schedule, I would say it's a very aggressive schedule. I'm impressed. And I've got my fingers crossed it'll work because I know, I, I don't know about others, but I know sometimes in the LAFCO process, it takes considerably longer to get through the process. I know, I know, I know.
Well, I did call, I did call to say, uh, it, to get it on the April fourteenth meeting, I talked to Rachel. She said March twelfth, so.
Good.
But for the March fifth resolution, we need to have pretty clear understanding of absolutely everything. And there's a loose ends on the, the, how we're going to charge that parcel tax then.
I wasn't talking about our part.
Right, well, I know, but, but you need, we need to have it clear before you do the resolution. So it should be, uh, I'll, I'll probably try to do it tomorrow or the first thing next week.
At a staff level, we are concerned about meeting that March fifth date. I think that that will be challenging, but.
Well, it will be challenging if you don't have the information.
Correct.
But we have a draft resolution now and we'll have the final, when do we have to have that, Liz?
Monday.
Monday. Today's Thursday.
Oh, the meeting, it's long ages.
Now, you can see that there's, you know, uh, anyway, a little delay will cascade.
Yeah, yeah, that's what my point was, is that if there's a delay in any one of these, it could cause a much longer, um, cycle that we'd have to go through, it looks like, in order to get it on. I mean, I see that you did, uh, you did put a little bit of cushion in here between June and July, right? The May, uh, board of supervisors hopefully, and then nothing in June and then July thirteenth. So you might need that cushion.
Yeah, the only problem with, with the LAF, is, is if LAFCO requires something and you don't do it in the first meeting and you have to come back to a second meeting, that was my, that was kind of why that's in there, so.
Okay, any other questions? Well, good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Listen, I, Robin, I'm so sorry I missed the last meeting. We were having a meeting here that didn't get out till late.
Okay.
Alrighty, well, this looks great.
Yes.
Go forth and conquer. That's great, so, okay, that's, uh, our presentation. Discussion, possible action, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from February seventh through February twentieth, twenty twenty. And B, approval of minutes of the meeting held February sixth, twenty twenty. What are the, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll, I'll make them, I'll make a motion to approve, approved ratification of payments issued from February seventh through February twentieth, two thousand twenty. And I will make a motion, can I make it on the same motion?
Yeah.
You can actually just make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
No, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as printed.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, city manager staff reports.
I'm actually, item number two.
Are you dreaming? I have another item? Okay, item number two. Session possible action. Approve the transportation claim for FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Oh, this is incoming. We have to approve this. Yes, local transportation fund and authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city. City.
Hello.
Hi.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we have before you our yearly LTF distribution. That's local transportation funds. Most of it goes to.
Roads.
Yes, well, most of it goes to the transportation system, the buses and the transportation center.
Oh, alright.
However, the remainder goes to the city for roads. And if you have questions, I'm here, but this is a fairly routine matter.
We should probably mention that the amount is just a little bit over seventy-three thousand dollars.
Right. I, uh, I was interested to see that the formula is the county receives twenty-five percent, no, excuse me, twenty-five cents for every seven dollars and twenty-five cents of state sales tax. Isn't that interesting?
Yeah.
Only twenty-five cents come back to the county and then that is parcel, parceled between all of the cities, right? Wow, interesting. So this is money that comes through. I sit on the, uh, the local transportation commission and the chair this year. And I was pleased, uh, as chair, that we've got two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars coming back to the city.
Cities.
Cities. No, that's us.
Right, I, I thought you said city and I was going to say.
I did say city. City of Waireka is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three seventy-two in the nineteen twenty fiscal year.
The county does use the majority of that allocation.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Right.
They'll use one ninety-two, eight twenty-five, and we'll get, oh, we'll only get seventy-three thousand.
Five hundred and forty-seven.
Now, we'll build much road.
We'll take it.
How do these numbers compare with this fiscal year? There's no comparison. Is it up or down?
It's, it's down a tiny bit, I believe. I believe that the prior year was something like two hundred and eighty-four thousand off the top of my head.
And now it's two sixty-six.
But this is a yearly thing. We get the letter every year.
So the sales tax for the county is down from year to year then?
Perhaps. I, I, I didn't do an in-depth analysis.
We could, we could send that information out afterwards. It, it varies.
Right.
Uh, some by the revenues that are coming in, and then also by how much the transit costs are. You know, some years they're a little bit higher than others because they try out, um, different routes and so on. And we look at the net, which is the seventy-three thousand. And I, I apologize, I don't know whether it's a little bit higher, a little bit lower than last year, but it's.
It's comparable.
It's comparable.
And it's more than budgeted, so that's good.
It's more than budgeted. I like that.
Okay, the magic words from Robin.
More than budgeted, which means we have more money in the general fund, right?
A little bit more.
A little bit more, a little bit counts.
That's great.
That's for sure.
Okay, is this, uh, is this an item that needs approval?
Yes.
Okay, right motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transportation claim for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Local transportation fund and authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the transportation claim fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty from the LTC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Go forth and deposit money in the general fund, that's great. Now, we're down to city manager and staff reports. I just got ahead of myself. City manager, Steve?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I want to mention really two things. One is that we've been providing, um, information to what's called the two-on-one system. And this is designed to, if you need social services of some kind or have questions about social services and a lot of other related services, you can call two-on-one, they'll have an operator there that will say, this is where you can find it. So they've been, uh, getting information from us, they've been getting information from a lot of nonprofits and other agencies as well. Um, so we're, we're getting that information to them. One of the other things that they have said is that the United Way is steerheading this. Uh, they're the people that have done it, everything that we've done in Shasta County, which is what we're modeling after up here. And they, um, the two-on-one, because it's a phone thing, is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. So, uh, the United Way has asked for our support, actually, the term that they use is endorsement. Uh, but it's a pretty easy thing to, to do because, um, they're doing it, so it's, it's not like there's competitors to do it right now. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that I will be sending in something that supports that, endorses that.
Good, that's one of the things that we were pushing for through the homelessness coalition too, to see that. Because that's a valuable asset for the homeless.
Yeah, it, it, it helps make, get people headed in the right direction instead of, sometimes they'll come to city hall and ask us questions because they don't know where else to go. And city hall seems like as good a place as any.
That's great.
So, anyway, that's happening. Also, I went to the, uh, city managers' conference. Uh, there's always lots of good news at city managers' conferences. Uh, we talked about things like, uh, housing and homeless and, uh, calpers and how much the unfunded liabilities are, um, programs for trying to not have liability coming from sidewalks and a, a number of other things that have to do with, uh, cities. Uh, always find out some good tidbits that I can bring home and then I also find out that things could be much, much worse than where we are, so. As you go to conferences.
It'd be worse. We live in a lovely city.
No, 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 what, what I mean is that they're.
There's always more progress elsewhere.
We're doing good. We're doing good here compared to some other places.
I agree.
And the, the war stories that, uh, other people tell are a lot better than mine, so.
I know, yeah.
Anyway, that's all I had today.
A lot better or a lot worse. Okay.
A lot worse would be actually what I'm going to say. They're more entertaining.
Yeah, entertaining. Okay, Paul, do you have a report?
I'll keep it quick. Enjoyed the fireman's dinner.
I was sleeping.
Did not win the chainsaw or the guns. Didn't even come close.
Neither.
And so it's nice to see everybody there. And Dwayne will probably second this, or maybe Joan will. But on, on their quick fix, um, they've taken, the city has taken care of the issue that I quick-fixed, um, online. We have a program called Quick Fix.
Oh, it's called Click.
See, see Click Fix.
See Click Fix.
What's, okay, whatever. I was, I, I'm amazed. I mean, I'm not, I'm pleasantly surprised.
We should tell them.
But I got a notice back that I just put in, I, you know, what I, what do you call it, an email, transmitted a, an issue to the city on something and it was done, a week, when did we do it? A week ago?
Yeah.
And it was fixed like within two days. So, it's pretty cool.
And it's, and they keep track of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Well, and any of us will talk to you about it if you want to hear about it.
Yeah.
Or any city employee will talk to you about it, because it's a good way to find things, photograph them, send them to the city and go, and then the city knows where they are.
Anyone that wants, we will send you an email with a link to the app.
Yes, exactly.
It'll be fun. And we like it.
Website homepage.
Oh, that too, yes.
That's right, yes.
Right, one click.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Very cool website.
Thank you.
Sure. Norm?
Just enjoyed the fireman's dinner.
It was nice. Did you win anything?
No, didn't win anything.
You'd have to report it if you did.
You got that nice card from Patty Grantham too.
Yeah.
That's a nice card from Patty.
Card from Forest Service Supervisor thanking us for, um, passing a resolution in support of the polyethylene burning so they can burn the slash pile.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Hopefully that will help protect our city a little better.
Yeah, that's awesome. And thank you for your service on the, um, the Fire Save Council. Have you guys had a meeting?
Uh, we have another one on Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, good, great. Debbie?
Okay, real quick, I went to the fireman's dinner as well. I don't see a couple, any of the faces here that should have been there on Saturday night. It was a good dinner. And it was nice to be.
We were all here except for.
No, no, out in the audience.
There's one there, there's one there. There's several people here that were.
Two?
Chief wasn't there, two.
No, no, no.
Nancy was there and Catherine was there and anybody else at the fireman's dinner? It was an awesome dinner. Good steak.
It was excellent. Very well attended. Um, okay, Tuesday is the Call Your Board meeting and this time it's in Waireka. Streams, if anybody cares to join, my alternate, please. Um, and keep in mind that Call Your Rest Stop sees one point nine million people a year and those are Caltrans numbers. So if you need to advertise anything there, that's the place to go. Um, let's see, inside, people that walk inside, we have about twenty-four hundred a month in the wintertime and more in the summertime that actually walk into the facility. So it's the best front door to the county that you can find. Please use it more. Um, let's see, and citizen of the years this weekend, friends of the fair bartending service.
I have tickets.
Yes, yes.
Right here.
All it takes is money.
Yes, we'll be there hosting the bar and remember that's always a good cause to support, uh, the fairgrounds, all the money, a hundred percent. Even the tips go to the fairgrounds. That's it.
The bar.
Awesome.
For the bar.
From the bar.
Yeah. I did not attend the, the fireman's dinner. I have, I, I got tickets. Um, I did have an excuse. My aunt got stuck up in the mountains and I, at one-thirty in the afternoon, I was up on top of all mountain trying to dig my aunt out. And I ended up getting stuck three times trying to get her out. I didn't get home till after seven. So I did have a legitimate excuse, because I, we were planning on going to dinner. We were looking forward to the dinner, because we went to it last year.
You bought your tickets for dinner?
We bought my tickets, yeah, we had the tickets and everything. But unfortunately, I was, uh, we ended up eating, um, Rayleigh's Chicken that night.
I thought you were going to say pork and bean.
No, it was just, just, yeah, it wasn't as good as I anticipated.
Oh.
Other than that, um, we did get some numbers back on the PIT count, the point in time count. Uh, I'm not going to give you exact numbers yet, because we don't have exact numbers yet, but, um, I can tell you right now, um, Siskiyou County, as a general, went up twenty percent in homelessness activity. Some areas went up even more. Ours, it looks like ours has held up to about twenty percent more activity in Waireka area, just to kind of give you an idea. Um, which is maintained fairly well because nationwide, especially down in other areas, LA and whatnot, the numbers have increased a lot more than that percentage-wise, so it's, it's getting, it's getting, yeah, but those are not.
Those are not accurate?
Not quite.
It says we've gone up from twenty eighteen, a hundred and eighty-one, to twenty nineteen to two seventy and twenty twenty to three twenty-five.
So we went, actually, from twenty eighteen, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty now, we went up forty percent in homelessness activity. Um, numbers, like I said, I can tell you, but I'm, I want to give you exact numbers, um, which I will be able to this, next week. We have a homelessness meeting this next Monday at one-thirty.
Different time.
Yeah, different time because of the availability of the, of the building. It's, uh, Behavior Health, um, the Red Oak Room at one-thirty this Monday, so, um, we, as possible supervisors here, so I'm looking at, um, you might want to start coming because Lisa Nixon does attend and she's very valuable in our, in the efforts to this, on this point, so. Um, I encourage you guys to come.
And where's the chair? He counts noses.
I do. Um, other than that, you know, we, yeah, we die to see as much help as we can on the, you know, the future, so, thank you. So, and that's all I have.
Good job. Good job. I'm glad you got your aunt dug out safely and that you got back safely. Um, it's been a pretty busy time. I also went to the fireman's dinner and saw everybody else there, but I just want you to know. He sat on that side of the room, she sat on that side of the room, he sat over here and I sat in the back, right? Next to Nancy down the way.
We were spread out, so you couldn't have a meeting.
Catherine was on the other side. Anyway, we, uh, it was fun and it was, it's nice to be able to help out the fire department. Those guys work so hard, guys and gals.
Yes.
That work so hard up there. So anyway, that was fun. Um, also had our Sacramento Valley Division League of California Cities teleconference board meeting. I'm still in the past president of that now. I was the president last year. Also, I attended, uh, Eric Harms did a talk at the museum last Friday, Valentine's Day. He did such a good job and he had pictures of the old-time mining equipment. It was all about mining in Siskiyou County. And that was really, really fun. And it was standing room only. We were in the back, right Nancy? We were in the back watching and, and my husband had to go sit in the car because he couldn't stand up that long. But anyway, it was really, really, I thought it was a nice event. And I'm really pleased to see that the museum is doing that living history, uh, story, uh, talk thing that's during lunch. I think it's at noon. Um, once a month, I think it is. Anybody know?
On Fridays.
On Fridays? Every Friday? I think it's once a month, isn't it? Yeah. Anyway, that was, that was really cool. Uh, I don't know how many of you went to the Caltrans meeting last night that was at the Miners Inn. That was really informative. That, there were a lot of people there. I was surprised. Filled up that, that room and they, uh, they had a lot of Caltrans people there to, um, to explain exactly what the work is going to be done on Main Street. It's, uh, they're doing the planning right now. The actual work is going to start in twenty twenty-two and it's going to go from two to three years. So Main Street's going to be torn up for a while, so they, uh, you know, they, they wanted, they came to Rotary yesterday too to talk about it. They want everybody to be patient because they say it's going to make our downtown area, our Main Street area, ever so much more beautiful, so. I'll remind people of that when everybody's screaming because they can't get in their driveway. Um, anyway, uh, also the planning commission, I went to the planning commission meeting last night, uh, here. Catherine was there on the planning commission. And, um, Amon Dillon and her husband were here and they talked about the new truck stop. Which is, I am so pleased to see how fast it's going up. And she said that it should be up and operable by the end of June.
That's her target date, yes.
That's her target date, right. So. That's her target date, right. So, it's, it's progressing very quickly. We'll, we'll see how that.
We would refer to that as early summer.
Early summer. There you go, early summer. So, I was really planning, please see here, oh, and also, those of you that know Barry Olin, be sure and wish him a happy birthday. He's the chair of the Planning Commission, and we all sang happy birthday to him. He was sitting right here last night. Also, so I went up to the truck stop today, and I met with him. They're, they also own the Holiday Inn Express. And she's got some other plans, which will be a surprise for the future, that I think are going to be very nice and add a lot to our town in the form of history, and native, and some other things. There's going to be two new restaurants up there. An Eastern Indian restaurant, and a, like Panda Express, but not Panda Express anyways. So, that'll be interesting up there as well. Also, had a meeting, uh, over at the Economic Development Council. I had a local transportation commission meeting as well. And I wanted to let everybody know, you guys know, because you were at the meeting, but the next Lola, and Lola is, Lola, Lola is the League of Local Agencies, and it's all the incorporated cities, as well as the, uh, the Community Services Districts are part of this group. They're going to be in Wairega. We move it around. We have quarterly meetings. It will be in April in Wairega, at the Wine Bar. So, I'm planning, Liz is helping me with that. Thank you, Liz. I'll, I promise you, I'll get all the information for her, so we can do the, so we can do the, she can do the flyer. She does a good job with that.
She does.
And that's all I can think of right now. So, I think that we're going into closed session. What?
Actually, I'd like to recognize Dave Simmons' mother that passed away. We actually did a presentation for her on her hundredth birthday.
Oh, that's right. We did, right here. Yes. That's true. And, and then another sad note, I don't know how many, I'm sure everybody knows Gary Allen. Gary Allen passed away on Monday. So, so very sorry to hear that. And our condolences go out to his family. Yeah, been a kind of a rough year.
Does Chief have anything you'd like to report?
Chief, do you have a report, a staff report?
A short thing.
Okay.
Today, I was informed by Senator Golly's office that our efforts to reintroduce legislation for a law that, that deals with school safety and disruptions on school grounds, that is a giant void right now, has actually made it, and has been assigned to Senate Bill, Senate Bill number eleven sixty-nine.
Eleven seventy-nine, good.
It's not trackable yet, but probably by the end of next week, it'll be trackable. And at some point in the future, I'll make a presentation to council as far as what it exactly entails. And I'll be asking for support from California Futures, the Debtless Shares Association, California Chiefs Association, et cetera, to make sure that it makes it through.
We would, we would like to write a letter of support, too, so if you can get us that information. Thanks, awesome.
But we're well on the way. It's back on, or at least it's been assigned to Senate Bills, and it passed last, uh, last time. It was introduced with bipartisan support throughout the state, and a meeting to Governor Vasquez, who was vetoed by Governor Brown. But I'm pretty confident that, um, that it will pass this time.
Good.
Great, wonderful. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, great. Liz, our city clerk.
One pesky reminder.
Yes.
Form seven hundreds. I haven't received from anybody from the table of Sepharata.
Uh, mine got, mine got.
Good job, Rheta.
Mine got sent off, I know. I seen it, I seen mine got sent off from my office manager.
April first is the deadline.
She gets a copy of it.
I know you're thinking the deadline is April, but your city clerk's thinking, oh, my God, we're two months in, and they haven't submitted anything.
Thank you for the reminder.
She does all, mine, all mine, so.
Rheta?
Okay.
You're good? Okay. Liz gets a copy.